Good afternoon. The time is now 3:30 on June 4th. Open the Planning Commission for the City of Norwood. Mrs. Town, would you please call the roll?
Chairman Powers.
President.
Mayor Schneider.
Present.
Mrs. Sickinter.
Present.
Mr. Hockney.
Present.
Mr. Sewer.
Present.
Item B is approval of the agenda. I have modifications for the agenda. We had insufficient legal notice provided for items D1 through D6. It's a 10-day requirement. However, PLK and many members of the public have made the time to be here today. Respecting that time and commitment, I would like to make the following modifications to the agenda. Removal of items D1 through D6. The addition of item E1, a presentation by Mick Oaks of PLK Properties. Item E2, public comment on item E1. And item E3, scheduling of the next meeting of the Planning Commission. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Mrs. Town, would you please call the roll?
Chairman Powers.
Yes.
Mayor Schneider.
Yes.
Mrs. Sickinter.
Yes.
Mr. Hockney.
Yes.
Mr. Sewer.
Yes.
Just by way of brief explanation to those who are in attendance here today. So what we've done with the agenda is we've removed items D1 through D6, so there will be no votes by the Planning Commission today. However, we are going to offer an opportunity for representatives of PLK to make a presentation on those items. And then we'll also offer an opportunity for anybody who's made the time to attend here today to give comment on that. After that, we will schedule a future meeting for the Planning Commission, at which time we can give the proper public notice for those items and then take any necessary votes.
So with that, we'll move to item C, approval of the minutes of the May 7th, 2025 meeting. Do I have any amendments to the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mrs. Town, please call the roll.
Chairman Powers.
Yes.
Mayor Schneider.
Yes.
Mrs. Sickinter.
Yes.
Mr. Hockney.
Yes.
Mr. Sewer.
Moving then to E, new business. First item E1, presentation by Mick Oaks of PLK Properties. Mr. Oaks.
Good afternoon. I'm gonna try to set up the thumb drive. See if it's working.
It's underneath. I think it's underneath.
Keyboard. Now watch the password. Nobody's looking, right? Yeah, exactly.
Well, while we wait for this, I will say the most surprising part is that I actually Try the airplane. That would be faster.
We wish we were there. Said almost there.
All right. There we go. Good afternoon. Thank you for the patience. My name is Mick Oaks. I'm a representative of PLK Communities. It's been a few months since we were last at Planning Commission to talk about this proposed development. So I'm here today to provide a brief update on some of the changes that we've made based off of comments from both the city as well as some of the neighbors. So walk through where we stand with the project today in a high-level overview, looking to gather any comments back and go from there. So high level, we were last here in December of '24. Since then, we have placed a property on Robertson under contract. That's gonna provide a secondary form of egress out of the property. That was the biggest one. Outside of that, we've adjusted all the interior roads to be a one-way entry off of Bee Street, one-way exit onto Robertson. We adjusted and played with some of the road widths to improve the fire truck turning radius. We extended the sidewalk from all the way to Robertson in an effort to make both sides of Robertson more connective and pedestrian-friendly. And we worked with Temple representatives for a solution on direct access into their parking lot. There is a letter of support that we put into the PUD submission packet. Also added angled parking bays, ADA-compliant spaces. And we added a code-compliant checklist for the underlying NBD zoning as well as the preliminary and final PD zoning, both as a separate PUD or contiguous to the Phase 2 Multicolor North PD submitted. We went back and added an additional fire hydrants and clearly labeled all locations and confirmed distances. Some of the comments that we've gathered from previous meetings and comments from the So here's the updated plan. This does show the proposed parcel under contract onto Robertson. It shows a one-way direct entry off of Bee Street, looping through the one-way exit onto Robertson. Sidewalk is discussed, going all the way to Robertson. Angle parking base to the south, as well as ADA spaces. And then we updated some of the FDC locations and added an additional one in the bottom-right One note that was brought to our attention, this was unincorporated, so all utilities will be privately owned and maintained past the right-of-way. So just something to note there. So this is the fire truck turning radius and pathway that we have updated and gone back to. So since we changed the roadways to a one-way entry and exit, we were able to slim down some of these straighter, narrow paths for a fire truck to drive onto 18 feet is what code is allowing for the interior streets. But in doing so, we decided we opted to give back some of that square footages on the turns that were causing some concern. So we left this at 20 feet. This would slim down to 18, as well as 20 for this turn as well. One thing to note too, so these are parking driveways, if you will, into the direct entry garages for the townhomes. Those are not allocated into the width calculations that we put in, but these will also be asphalt driveways. So there is ample turnaround space based on our calculations with the civil engineer. Here's some of the other distances and widths that we've noted. So with the one-way, we slimmed this down to 18. We left these at 20 for a wider turning radius. One thing I will note, so we, I don't know, let me go back off of this. So this is the truck dimensions is 42 by 10, which is the latter truck. So we, in speaking with our engineers, there was a comment that, you know, this plan showing is the best driver on the best day in the biggest truck. It is, it would not qualify under that. It is an average first-time driver, first time inside of this development, how they would approach this path with the biggest truck. That was how we calculated with our engineers. So we do feel confident based off the model showing that the turning radius is, and such, meets the code requirements. Just highlighting that the fire truck wheels on our model do not touch the curb. The chassis does go over the curb extension, but the wheels remain on the road. So here's a portion of the checklist that we included. And this is for the underlying NBD zoning. Essentially, we went through each and every requirement of the NBD. We did list reference pages to the PD application. These were just all a conglomeration of comments that we received and wanted to have addressed for our PD submission packet. The ones that do not have a direct reference page, for example, the parking lighting, these are all things that we plan to address once we get further in the approval process that will be flushed out in a plan review. But for all the purposes of an actual plan approval, we feel that we are compliant with both NBD zoning as well as preliminary and final PD. And one final thing I did want to discuss was the open area requirements. So a multitude of things. Right now, we are showing approximately 42% of open area. There has been discussion as to the south portion, what would be considered an open area. It is heavily wooded. There is some topography. We do have a few thoughts on this. If you extrapolate the south portion and insert it into the overall Factory 52 PUD and contiguous parcel, that overall open area space combined with the northern parcel is still above the allotted 25% PD requirements. That is something that is an option we looked into. Obviously, the NBD does not have a, NBD zoning does not have a required open area space. So that is another option. Additionally, right now, we are showing a detention basin, which is not incorporated into the open area calculation. Another option would be to make that a retention basin, make it consistently wet, almost as a pond. And that is per code allowable to be considered open area space. These are all options we're looking into. We're trying to be, find some common ground on this, understanding that it was a point of emphasis in the last meeting. So here's the northern parcel, breaks out the open areas for the already approved PUD. This is the Phase 1, which is 40%. The Phase 2 highway, 37%. Then that is also incorporated into the southern portion. So in summary, if you take all of Factory 52, the north parcel, the highway land, the multicolor north, and the south, we are still at 35.9% open area, which exceeds a 25% open area requirement. So understanding that, some may not consider that southern portion all of open area requirements. We would still be in compliance with the 25% if you did shave off a portion of that. So would be happy to answer any questions on this proposed project and go from there.
Questions from the Planning Commission? Mrs. Sickinter?
So the question about the property that you purchased to make a driveway, how close is it to the neighbor?
So we have not purchased it yet. We're under contract to purchase. Part of that is contingent on plan approval. And just, when you say close to the neighbor, how far is the dimension of the road to the neighbor?
Well, if you're purchasing the property and you're gonna make it into a road, correct?
Correct.
So how close is the road that you're gonna be using for this property to the direct, to the neighbor, the closest neighbor?
I can get you the exact foot. It falls within the boundary, or whatever that setback requirement is. It is code compliant. I don't have the exact footage from property line to the end of the roadway.
What kind of a buffer are you gonna provide that neighbor?
Whatever's required for the code.
So as far as the green spaces go, I don't agree with any of that information, really. I think there really does need to be a solution for green space in that property. It's across the street from Factory 52. So I think that's a separate entity, and it needs to be addressed immediately before anything else is even done. I mean, we're not, we're just gonna sit here and think, oh, let's just see how this plays out. I think, I would like to see something clear-cut of this is the solution, this is what I, what's gonna happen over there.
So, and we've, we've had a few different discussions going on. What, do you have a proposed solution for what you would consider open area in that space? I mean, as, as it is today, it is open. The topography is steep, yes, but it's also abutting the highway as well. So we've looked at several different options, none that really do achieve what we would consider an open area. Where is that delineation line of what is considered open as it is now versus what we could do to improve it that would make it more open, if that makes sense?
I would love to see something where people who are living there can actually go out and enjoy the area. So I also had another question about the fire department. Do you agree with the turn? Are you happy with what they've proposed? If you could step up, sir.
Let me give a little disclaimer. We're never, we're not pro-development, anti-development. We're just gonna stick to the fire code.
If you would state your, your neighborhood position.
Sure. Thomas McCabe, Fire Chief, City of Norwood. So this development, as it sits, the radius are what they are, right? It's a CAD development that they throw in, and we don't ever like radius where the chassis is over, not the roadway. But it is allowable, and it's something that occurs especially with a long truck. Our point would be that while the 18-foot streets are a code compliant for streets, they are non-compliant for Ohio fire code. And then it depends on which fire code we're gonna utilize. The City of Norwood has adopted both the Ohio fire code and the Southwest Ohio fire code, which gives us some flexibility in determining, it's a fire-protected building, i.e. sprinkled, that allows us to make some adjustments to it. But 18 feet is not enough. Specifically, if you look at the way the, the proposed buildings have a six-foot driveway entrance that's attached to the driveway, well, obviously, it's not gonna be parking there until there is parking in there, and then we don't have an 18-foot street. And being a private area, this isn't gonna be a place where law enforcement can go in and correct that situation either. All in all, the turns themselves, I think we can suffice with that. It is pretty tight. Anytime you have a fire with something this, this tight, it's a little concerning. The other issue is that it's setback, right? It's behind, the whole development's behind houses on Beach, it's behind houses on Kendall Worth, and so we've got a little bit of restricted access. The additional fire hydrant is excellent, but we still have to bring additional water for another, another water source or so. I would say, in early stages, it's something we work with, but obviously, we have to have some, I think, some changes to it as it's.
Thank you, sir.
Further questions for Mr. Oaks?
Yeah, I, I look at this, and you've stated multiple times that you've, you've put these things in place per the code, per what is required by code.
Correct.
So, but then, as the chief talks, there's apparently another code that somebody else is using that you're being, a standard that you're being held to. So my question would be, in other communities, do you have that same challenge? If you went and did this development in Montgomery, or did this development in Blue Ash, would they come to you and say, well, this is Blue Ash's code, and you're all good, I see your design, but we got another code you guys should be, you should be living up to? I'm not sure where, how that works. Is that something that happens to you in other communities where you're developing?
That is not typical for us, no. It's usually, to your point, it has been a little confusing going off of Norwood code, Ohio Southwest Revised Fire Code, trying to decipher who takes precedence versus multiple different codes. I wouldn't say that that's something that we typically run into in other municipalities. It's pretty much one code takes all.
Okay, so then, don't go away, Nick, because I've got more questions for you. I'd like a question to, to remove the building department. I mean, what's your stance on that? Are we looking at multiple different codes that they have to, or hoops that you have to jump through when they're engineering this?
When they're engineering, we have a multiple code. We have the Ohio Building Code, we have the Fire Code, we have the Plumbing Code. They have to go through all multiple different hoops that they have to go through, sign a building, NSI. The Fire Code has specific criteria, and one of the criteria is if a building is at a certain height, you could have a road XY. And if it gets above that, it has to be YY. To throw in those numbers, if a building's over 35 feet at the roof line, or the, and we, since it's a peaked roof, it's half the height of the building, half the height of peak, they're over 35 feet, therefore, according to the fire code, the fire code will say it has to be a 26-foot wide road, X is.
At a certain height.
If the, because the buildings are at a certain height. And we, at the building department, we are safety-oriented, not, and that's what the building codes are based off of, safe, life safety. And the Fire Code is also based off of life safety. So that's what we go with. Yes, there are compromises that we can make, and that's something we have to discuss with the fire department and, and the owners. Because we think, and that 18 feet is really tight for a fire truck to make turns. On a straight road, not a big problem, but making sharp turns.
Because a fire truck, how wide, maybe that's a question for the chief, but.
Yeah.
A fire truck has to run down a 10-foot wide road, right? I mean, just like any other, any other vehicle, it's not like you go past a fire truck and they have wide load signs on them. They're doing 10-foot length roads too. And you're saying that it needs to have four feet on each side in these developments, although we don't have that anyplace else.
According to my understanding, and you have to ask the chief, it's, it's driving through it, making the turns, and also setting up your truck with the outriggers, and the outriggers go out further when they have to set up. So a 10-foot wide road, driving down, may be okay, but when they have to set up their outriggers, it's wider than that. And that's what's dictating some of the roadways.
Okay, but it's. Continue. I, I just look at that and say, like, okay, I recognize a fire department would probably like to have 25-foot roads everywhere, and there'd be parking on the side, and they can, but that's not feasible. It's not realistic. And, and it's true that, you know, these, so I go back to the question of Nick, which is, your designers are looking at all these requirements. I mean, as they're putting this stuff together, the architects are looking at, and they have certifications that they hang their hat on also, that says this, this is what they do as a profession. I'm surprised that we're making, somehow, we're making it different here in Norwood than other places, that, that these guys don't, it's not actually, they don't have a good playing field because clearly, something's different here than other communities. So that's an important part. You, you talked about improving the turns, and I know the chief talked about the chassis going over the backside of it and, and different parts, and some of the, I guess, some of the trucks have a longer chassis than others, I understand that. When, when you look at the zoning on this property, Nick, and you talk about all of Robertson Avenue, and even a large, not a large, but a portion of Beech, or a portion, yeah, a portion of Beech back to Leslie where it comes down, so that is all neighborhood business district. So all of those homes on Robertson could be changed into businesses. A lawyer could purchase one of those and have, as a dentist of anybody, and much like the, what used to be the plumbing shop that was there and all those things. So that, this has all been, and I guess the question to, maybe, Carrie, you would have the history on that. When was that changed to neighborhood business district? Or has it been that way forever? I mean, since the playing card company and the, you know, the color fab and all the different renditions? Cincinnati lithograph in 1952? I know you weren't around back then, but has it been NBD? Have all those homes been NBD just as far back as you can remember?
I've worked for the city in my position, in this position, for 27-plus years, and that's always been neighborhood business district in that area.
Okay.
The only changes in the area have been the PUD overlay.
Okay. And then the last thing I would, I would question is going back to that common, the open common space. So you talked about the, right now, it's a detention basin, and you're, which is a dry basin that would be mowed and trimmed and all that, just like we are, we have another, we're going to have in another area. But it's, as a detention basin, it's not, it's not considered open common space?
Yes, it seems like somewhat of a gray area as to be what can be defined as open space versus not. I mean, we have, in other places, we have detention ponds that are dog runs, they're places for people to walk. It is there for the purpose of, in It is there for the purpose of, in the rain events, that it's able to retain water and slowly release back into the utility system. We've entertained the idea of making that a retention and permanently wet, and that is explicitly listed in the code as something that could be considered an open area allowable space. What we're really looking forward to, and it plays into the southern portion, the wooded section, you know, there's, we could, we could tear some of those trees out and make it grass. I don't know if that's what would be best for the property, is it's right next to 71. I don't think that terracing that would be, there's no benefit to that. You get into this list of what is now considered open area versus what would, what would it like to be considered open area, and there's no real delineation from one to the other. So that's what we're trying to work through. It's, right now, it's open, it's wooded, but what above and beyond that needs to be done to make it classified as open? I don't know.
Could you put underground retention there, in that spot, and then have, like you said, picnic or open space above it, that...
At a significant cost for underground detention.
I think those were the only points that I, that came up just so far.
Further questions for Mr. Oaks?
One real quick, and I was just looking through the drawings. I didn't see, what is the dimension? I think you said there's a pad in front of every garage door?
Yes, sir.
That was what you said?
A driveway, really. And I say driveway lightly, it's, it is a short distance from the road to pull into their garage.
I'm just trying to picture this in my own mind, the back-to-back driveways. Somebody pulls in with a Suburban on both sides. What's the road width now? Because they're not, they're not able to pull the Suburban off the driveway.
They would be pulling into the garage.
Except if they're a visitor.
Not a parking pad.
It wouldn't be, we wouldn't deem that as a parking space. It would be too short for just about any car to park there in front of it.
I'm just talking about what happens.
Yes.
I mean, you could write whatever you want in that drawing, but it's not what really happens. When somebody comes to pick up the kids, whatever, it's not their place. I mean, it's just, it's a very, very complex development because of its height. And when you say it's very expensive to vault the stormwater, you know, it's being done all the time. It's happening right up off Lawson.
Yeah, so, and two things, I'd like to answer the question twofold. So I know the comment of, that's not what happens all the time with everyday life, understand that. That's why we did intentionally have, and this picture's hard to see, there are parking spaces toward the north, visitor parking. We feel like this is ample enough visitor parking that we won't have a situation where cars are blocking the roadway. Secondary, the underground detention, this is something that I would defer to on our engineers. They've proposed the above ground. To your point, I think it's something that we've definitely looked into. The plan works as it is now, as required by the open area space and everything. We feel that it's sufficient with the detention pond that we have shown, but that's something I would defer to the engineers, and why they opted to that is to not underground detention.
Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Oaks, could you tell me how many of these units are two-bedroom and how many are three-bedroom?
They are all two-bedrooms, I believe. Two-thirds twos, one-thirds threes. Thank you.
And how many guest spots are there for parking?
I don't have, 17.
20.
Yeah, I was thinking 20.
Do you have the nine, eight, the three?
Okay. Any additional questions for Mr. Oaks? Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Before we move to item E2, is there any additional discussion by planning commission members?
No, sir.
Hearing none, we will move to item E2. Opportunity for public comment. As you come to the microphone, please state your name and your address, and I believe, Ms. Town, is there a notepad there for them to write their name down so the court reporter can get that correct?
Instead of misspelling everybody's name.
Thank you, Ms. Town. Anyone who would like to give public comment?
Good afternoon, my name is Tony Boyle. I am the current property owner at 2739 Robertson Ave. So Ms. Sickinger, I greatly appreciate your question in regards to who are the next-door neighbors for this driveway. I am one of those, and my property line is directly next to their property line. So with this road, that would be directly on my property line minus whatever the minimum buffer is. So I know Mick had mentioned that, obviously, they would follow code with the buffer, but you know, as we're all here as a community, I would ask that possibly, since we're trying to fit in 48 townhomes between 30 current residential properties that are owned by residents that have been here for many, many years, that possibly we go above and beyond the absolute minimum requirements to make this a collaborative effort. Additionally, I do know that there's still open conversation in regards to a retention pond versus detention pond. Again, that is directly on my backyard fence line, so if it is a retention pond and we get big storms, I have concerns that that is going to flood my backyard. We've already seen the retention pond at Phase 2 North get flooded, the road completely flooded, and all the mud spill over to the road. So we have seen that, so I do have concerns there. And then, I don't know if, from the building code, if you can answer this. Currently, the road, it looks like it's at 16 feet wide. I'm not sure what the...
I'm just...
The exit road to Robertson. I believe they said.
Go ahead, I'm listening.
As I said, just as a collaborative effort, if...
It's 18.
18 feet wide, is that, and that's the requirement for the width?
Minimum, yes.
Okay. And then, for the, for the driveways, I think you said that there's going to be garages. Are they single garages or double garages? Now, I just wanted to ask those few questions first, since that was the graph that was the most recently shown. And then there's one other point that I do, would like to bring up, which is, I believe it was on the November 6 meeting, Phase 2 North was contingently approved on an updated traffic study. And I'm trying to figure out when or if that has been completed and what the results of that traffic study are, because per the meeting, that was all contingently based that any traffic concerns and safety issues would be addressed. So it's very concerning to me that we're looking at possibly approving another development before those have been addressed. Phase 1 is already built, and I fully understand that PLK owns this property and they are allowed to build. There is going to be building and there is going to be development. I understand that. I think we, most here, all understand. I don't want to talk for others, but we all understand that. But our concerns are that these developments are being pushed through and expedited through the approval process without fully taking into consideration concerns that we have. As I said, Phase 1 is already done. Phase 2 has not even started being built yet. That includes 74 townhomes, a 10,000 to 15,000 square foot mixed-use facility, a hotel, event spaces, Factory 52, it's summertime, they're doing weekly events, they have dog parks, 400 apartments. So half of that development hasn't even been built yet, and we're here talking about trying to squeeze another 48 townhomes between 30 current neighbors right now. So it's just concerning that we don't have the proper information to fully understand traffic, pedestrian safety, the current infrastructure. We're well aware of the shape of the roads on Robertson and Beach at the current moment, and what this is going to do for those that are living there. So as I said, I fully understand PLK owns this property. There will be buildings, there will be development. We're just asking that you take all these concerns into consideration and possibly look and make sure we're doing this in an accountable and responsible manner, and not just blowing aside traffic, safety, and current infrastructure concerns. So everyone, I do appreciate your time, and thank you.
Hi, my name's Teresa Hennard. I'm a resident and the owner of a property on Leslie Avenue. And so I similarly have some concerns with kind of infrastructure and safety that I've seen with the developments that have happened already. And, you know, I like the developments, they've been great for the community, but like we're saying, as it continues to expand, I think traffic and those concerns are only going to increase. So I can't tell 100% from where this is on the map, but Leslie deadens into Beach Street, which is almost like right where the entrance, it looks like, is proposed for that. And Leslie, already the infrastructure of the road. For instance, I have a sinkhole in front of my house, and it's been repaired the past two years in a row. It was just repaired last month. And traffic's only going to increase down my street if the entrance almost lets up into it. And so I have concerns about, you know, what's the road going to look like? What's the infrastructure, those types of things? Additionally, already, when there's events and things at Factory 52, my street is completely aligned with parking already from the events that are going on, from things that are going on at Factory 52, and Phase 2, and then this phase here continues to increase, I'm really concerned about parking and what my street's going to look like, and just, in general, there's a lot of residents on my street that don't have driveways and places to park, and where do those residents then go? And then, kind of my final point is to go off of traffic and safety. So at Beach and Robertson, we walk our dog every day, and I can't tell you the number of times we've already been hit at the corner of Robertson and Beach because of, you know, people not adhering to traffic signs. And I just am concerned with public safety and if a formal traffic light needs to be put in, and if there needs to be more traffic studies done, and continuously, as the developments start to open up and Phase 2 starts to open up. So those are just a few of my concerns. Thank you.
Ma'am, can you spell your last name?
Yeah, H-E-N-N-A-R-D.
And you said Leslie?
Over time for the next person who would like to speak? You may.
And the reason why I forgot is we're focused on Factory 52, Phase 2 South. Going back quickly to Phase 2 North, I do know that there are three exit entrances that are planned to be built coming to Robertson. I live on Robertson, one of those is directly across from my driveway, and then I'm now going to have an exit road next to me, so I'm going to be surrounded on three sides out of four sides of my property with three different traffic patterns. Safely, I do not understand how I'm going to be able to exit and enter my driveway. With that being said, in relation to the traffic studies, when you're coming across the bridge into Norwood, right now, it's two lanes merges into one. My property, where it sits, that is right where the merge ends. So when I'm sitting there at a dead stop trying to turn left into my driveway, I have people speeding to beat the merge and are swerving around me in order to avoid running into me. And it's just, like, I forget the name, but as the previous speaker just had mentioned, you know, the corner at Beach and Robertson, I myself have a dog walk in every day. It is a very dangerous intersection. And, you know, I know, I think back in November, we talked about traffic lights, this and that. Another thing that, you know, I would like to possibly consider is, you know, I do not want to congest traffic, I don't think anyone does, but I think the main goal would possibly be slowing down traffic and possibly looking at speed humps. I know many, many other communities around this area have implemented those, and have seemed to have some success with that. So possibly looking at implementing those on Robertson to slow down some of that traffic. Yeah, I think, thank you.
Can I answer one of his questions?
Yes.
We took into account those three entrances and the one direct, almost directly in front of your house, and they are closing that one up. That one will not be there because we were concerned about all the entrances, and that just offset cars turning. We were expecting an accident, just waiting to happen, so...
And I appreciate that, but I actually talked with Mick, and he told me about that, but I actually saw it on one of the slides, so that's why I remember.
Yeah, it's in one of the...
Yeah, actually, I just brought up the design, if you want to take a look at it.
So I just wanted to let you know that we did try to address it, and they heard it, and they removed it.
My name's Diane Farrell. I live at 2749 Robertson. I've been a longtime resident in Norwood. My issues are probably, just an echo, things that people have already said, but I'm really concerned about the safety down there. It is a danger so stretched through there. There's been multiple accidents there over the years, and some serious, and with people out, there's more and more people coming, more and more traffic. I came home one night in the spring, and both sides were just slimed with people out, enjoying the nice weather after being cooped up, dogs everywhere walking. Very nice, but there's so much traffic, and it really is a safety concern. I would like to know what measures we're considering. I heard there were some things being in the works, so to speak, and I really like the idea of the speed humps to slow the traffic through there. The other thing is with the stormwater drainage. Couple weeks ago, when the rain was really heavy, there was torrents, I mean, torrents of water coming off that hill, and all kinds of mud going into the stormwater drain. And I live directly across from that, and if that should become completely stopped up, all that water is going to come to my yard and into my basement. And I would have thought there would have been something in place, like, I would have thought that would be standard, that we have some type of water erosion control. I just think that should be standard, that they shouldn't have to be asked or told to do that. My other issue, and I know this is probably not a planning traffic issue, but it's the construction, how it's being done, the pounding is shaking homes. You can be inside your home, you can sit in your chair, and you can feel the vibration shaking your home, and I'm really concerned. If I'm going to have a cracked foundation or cracks in my wall, and this is just, we're still not even through construction, and I don't know what kind of oversight is done. I know there's things in place, but I don't know if someone goes down there and sees what's going on, or kind of keeps an eye on everything, but just, I just don't think that's appropriate for how they're using that equipment to pound on the ground that heavy that it shakes homes and the stormwater just running off. And as far as the turning radius and whatever, I hope you really consider the safety aspect. I would hate to see a fire in there and a fire truck not be able to get back there to someone who really needs it. That would be horrendous. Green space. We're saying the green space is really tight, and I don't know. I don't know if there's enough or there's not enough, but it seems if they add another paved area, that's going to take away from green space, so it's going to reduce the amount of green space. And I just, I really feel it's going to add traffic to me, because I lived shortly down the street from there, but for those... the street from there, but for those two neighbors that live there to have a driveway and try to enjoy their backyard, or even, it's going to be directly, directly by their windows. I mean, I don't see how that can do anything but make their homes unlivable. And I just, I just really, I hope that this only won't be changed. And that's basically it. I just hope that we do safety measures, try to slow the traffic, and really think through that, everything that's happening, because it seems like we're just, let's go rah-rah, development, yay, it's great, but we're not thinking about the things that may be the negative impacts that that also brings. So hopefully, we can strike a balance. So, thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak? Anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move to item E3, which is the scheduling of the next Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a suggested date and time for any of the commission members?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to suggest June 19.
At 3:30?
3:30 PM, not AM, PM.
That works fine for me.
Anything for you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Sewer? Okay. With that, I will make a motion to schedule the next meeting of the Planning Commission for June 19 at 3:30 PM. Do I have a second?
Can I ask a question first?
Yes.
Is there an agenda set for that meeting?
Well, we'll have an agenda come out from the Building Department shortly. Should, generally speaking, include the items D1 through D6, unless the developer would like to make some alteration between now and then, but otherwise, that is what the agenda will be.
That's the reason I'm asking why we have a special meeting, that's to cover the items that have just been tabled.
Correct.
Or discussed.
For our 19th meeting, this will go in the newspaper tomorrow.
Okay.
If there's no time to change.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
And the challenge why these things were not brought up at this point was because the notice did not go out at the right time to have the public hearings. So that's why we need to have another meeting.
Right. Motion on the floor is to have the next meeting of the Planning Commission, June 19 at 3:30 PM. Is there a second?
Second, actually.
Ms. Town, would you please call the roll?
Chairman Powers.
Yes.
Mayor Schneider.
Yes.
Mrs. Sickinger.
Yes.
Mr. Hosking.
Yes.
Mr. Seaw.
Yes.
We have no old business, we have no absent members to excuse, so we'll move to item H, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. I'll say.
Mr. Hochney made the motion? Seconded by Mayor Schneider. Ms. Town, would you please call the roll?
Chairman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Schneider?
Yes.
Mrs. Sickinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hochney?
Yes.
Mr. Sewer?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned at 4:22.